I call this Richfield Planning Commission meeting to order. Tonight is August 23rd, 2021. We're wearing our masks tonight, so people, please let each other know if you can't hear each other. Sorry, staff or people in the audience, anywhere. So first we have approval of the minutes of our June 28th regular planning commission meeting. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, thank you. Any discussion about the minutes? Okay, all those in favor, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. I assume we have to approve the minutes of the work session meeting? Okay, all right. So next we are going to move to consider and possibly approve the minutes of the work session with, our joint work session with city council from June 26th. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? I have one item. It's minor. First of all, I thought these minutes were just awesome. They were so detailed and they really captured, I don't know who did them, but they really captured our discussion that night. But I wanted to delete one sentence. It's on page six, third paragraph from the bottom. Chair Kwam said that a volume of firearm inventory should also not be criteria for less regulation. That's sort of out of context. It has to have a because with it, or it doesn't make sense. When I read it first, I thought, I didn't say that, but then I went and listened, and I thought, oh. So I'd just like to delete that sentence because I said more with it, and I don't think it's worth adding that detail. So, and since it's something I said, I think it'd be okay to delete. Any discussion on that? Those of you that were there on the... Okay, so I move that we delete that one line. Chair Kwam said the volume of firearm inventory should also not be criteria for less regulation. If people have questions of me about that, feel free. Is there a second?
Chair Kwam? Or for staff?
Who's she made out of a second?
Huh?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no. Well, I'm just curious on this quickly. It's, are we allowed to delete any? Are we allowed to strike language altogether? Okay, all right. I was just wasn't sure about that.
That's why we vote on them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So is there a second?
My second.
Okay, thank you. And discussion or questions or anything?
Chair Kwam, you said page?
Page six, I believe, and in our packet. And the paragraph starts, "Councilmember Hayford O'Leary agreed with Councilmember Troutman." The very last sentence, Chair Kwam said... Third paragraph from the bottom. Do staff see it? Okay.
Okay, so Chair Kwam agreed with Hayford O'Leary and said that she preferred including that portion?
No, farther down, third from the bottom. Yeah, you got it.
So that's the section you want to strike?
Yes, that sentence.
Okay.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you. Next we have our open forum.
Chair Kwam, I got a question for administrative purposes on signing the minutes. Do I just strike that out from that document before I sign it?
I think that I would need to bring the minutes back at the next meeting. No, you know, you just voted on it to strike it. So I think you need to vote on the motion as amended to the original approval of the minutes with the change.
Okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion that we vote to approve the minutes of the joint work session with city council from June 26th with the striking the one sentence that was mentioned. Your second? Thank you. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. All right, next we move to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items not on tonight's agenda. We have this every month. People are welcome to come and share something you think would be relevant to the planning commission. You have up to three minutes and you can call ahead of time. You can write ahead of time. You can call live over the phone. Now we have that technology, or you can walk in and share at the podium. So open forum is for things not on tonight's agenda. Melissa, do we have any callers on the line?
Chair Kwam, there are no callers.
Thank you. All right, is anyone here for open forum? Did we have any, anyone write in ahead of time or call in ahead of time for open forum?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will close open forum. It's informal. That moves us on to agenda approval. So we need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
A motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion on tonight's agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it and the agenda is approved. Okay, that brings us to our public hearing. So that's a longer process, but it's this, I'm sorry, I didn't mention the phone number for open forum. It's 612-861-0651. So if anyone comes in late for open forum, just, Melissa, please let me know, since I didn't say that number right away. It's also, all the information is on the planning commission's webpage called agendas and minutes. That page, there's instructions about how to participate. So, all right, so the same phone number will be for any of our public hearings. Tonight we have consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing interim use permit to allow Richfield Bloomington Honda to use city-owned property at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue South for employee parking. Staff?
Thank you. Richfield Bloomington Honda has applied for an interim use permit, an IUP, to lease the city-owned property at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue as a standalone parking lot. Standalone parking lots are not an allowed use in Richfield. An IUP would temporarily permit this non-conforming use. Honda has been leasing this property from the city since 2013 for employee parking. Two previous interim use permits were granted to Honda for employee parking at this site in the past. One in 2015 and one in 2018. The most recent IUP expired on July 31st, 2021. Honda is applying for a new IUP to continue leasing the site. The applicant has not used the lot at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue for approximately nine months, although they have continued to pay the lease. The current redevelopment, no current redevelopment plans are proposed for the property at this time. Should the council grant approvals for development, the terms of the IUP would allow the city to terminate this agreement. In order to approve the IUP, the council must find that the temporary nature of the permit warrants waiving certain provisions of the zoning code. In this case, the prohibition of parking lots as a standalone use would be waived for this IUP. Staff is proposing the following conditions as part of the IUP approval. The term of the IUP will begin upon execution of a license agreement with the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority or 90 days from this approval, whichever comes first, expiring no later than December 13th, 2022. The lot is to be used for employee parking only. No parking of inventory vehicles or customer vehicles shall be permitted at any time. A maximum of 77 vehicles shall be stored on-site. No vehicles shall be parked or stored on grass or buffer areas. The applicant shall install no overnight parking signage at each vehicle entrance to the parking area within 60 days of the IUP approval. The parking lot shall be kept in a good state of repair with seal coating and/or patch repairs as necessary and kept clear of any debris. Trees, shrubs, and grasses shall be trimmed and maintained as necessary to preserve landscaping aesthetics. And the attached resolution includes a provision authorizing two possible six-month extensions to the IUP with an additional stipulation. Honda's prior land use approvals for their property at 401 West 77th Street require the construction of a parking structure to fully accommodate their parking needs by 2020. This is in City Council Resolution 10807, which was adopted in June of 2013. No structure has been constructed, nor has the applicant applied for an extension or amendment to the approved plans. Staff proposes that an extension of the IUP only be considered if the applicant does one of the following. Return to the council to request an extension or amendment to the approved final development plans, or apply for permits to construct the parking structure. Staff and the Richfield Bloomington Honda general manager, Tim Carter, the applicant, are both here for any questions.
Thank you. So the applicant, Richfield Bloomington Honda general manager, Tim Carter, is here tonight. Did you want to share anything with us before we open the public hearing? Sure. Then we can hear you if you answer questions, if you're at the microphone. Thank you for signing in.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councilors, commissioners, excuse me, and anyone else who's listening. My name is Tim Carter and general manager of Richfield Bloomington Honda. I've been the general manager of this store since 2002. We're owned by Tom Wood Incorporated, which is based out of Indianapolis. We've owned the store since 1986. We did a redevelopment of our site six years ago and built the facility that you guys, I think you're aware of what it is, where it is, into about 160-plus thousand square foot state-of-the-art facility, second largest in the country from a square footage standpoint. We're pretty proud of it. We're figuring out how to navigate through it. It went from a 33,000-square-foot facility to this one, and it was quite the change, but needed primarily for service, business, and growth. At the time, before we actually finished the facility six years ago, we agreed in the approval process to build that facility to put up a ramp, multi-story ramp. It seemed like a good idea at the time. I was the one dealing with the city. I was not the one dealing with my ownership group and the cost of the project. And got the approval, had four intentions of putting that facility, the parking structure up by 2020. John and Melissa and I and several mayors and city council people have discussed this issue quite at length and in detail many, many times over those six years as to why it's not up today. I'll give you a brief summary of why that is. When we did complete the facility and all the numbers were finalized, it was a $38 million project. And for this market, that's quite over the top. Other Honda stores rebuilt in the same time period, similar square footage, but not multi-story like I have. And it's over around 18 million per completion. So the total project taxable base came in quite high. I'm paying over $250,000 a month in taxes, and I was paying 330 for the entire year in the old facility. So my discussions with the city was I could have built a one-story structure and had a more reasonable build and then build a parking facility on top of that, and the total cost would have came to about 38 million. And the amount of taxes that the city was hoping to generate would have been there from that standpoint. But they said, nope, nope, you agreed to that original project. We didn't really, you know, it didn't matter to us what it turned out to be. You committed to that ramp, and we still expect that ramp. So I asked for leniency on that, and they said, okay, we don't, we're not going to hold your feet to the fire in the 2020, but we do expect you to still build it some days, so let's just keep talking. But now I heard tonight, I need to come back in and file for an extension of that to make it official, so that's fine. I'll do that. I do actually plan on building a parking facility. I would really rather have it on my property because over those six years, I have searched high and low through the area, Minneapolis, Bloomington, Burnsville, any area close, Edina, that I could possibly buy some land and put up another structure cheaper than what I could put up on my own land. And really, when it comes down to it, with my business, selling cars and servicing cars, time is very, very valuable. So that parking structure, from a long-term operational standpoint, needs to be on my lot. So I recently had a discussion with John Stark that I said, okay, you guys would like to have it. You may not be familiar with where they wanted the ramp, but they wanted on the southeast side of my property. And I said, well, what I might want to do is, I had a Mitsubishi franchise on the other side of Honda that I ended up figuring out wasn't a good business plan. And so I turned Mitsubishi back and turned that into a reconditioning center for the Honda store because Honda kept growing. And so I also have a BMW motorcycle franchise in that little building. And that, the cost of the structure for that business way outweighs the reasonable dollars and cents for that. So I'd like to move BMW out of that facility into a more reasonably priced facility where it's taxed lower, cost less. Somewhere in Minneapolis, we're looking for some property now, and I'd like to actually tear that building down and build a structure on the northeast side of that facility of that property. But I said, John, not tomorrow. I'm still, through the pandemic, that really took me down. I went from 187 employees down to 79 employees last April. And it's been a tough go. My business went down 7%. Been rebuilding since. Then we went through a second wave, and I had to go down again. And I'm just rebuilding back from that phase. And good news is pandemic post-boom is every, you know, there's lack of everything and not enough employees to handle the business. So I'm building back up, and that's the reason why I haven't used, I've been leasing this property we're here to talk about tonight, but I haven't had cars on it because of that fact. I just don't have enough employees. But I'm banking on where, I'm going to get to a point where my service business is again back where it should be, and I'm going to have to move my employees off my lot over to that lot again. So I'm leasing for the future as a peace of mind right now. And when I do get the business built back up, I told John, I will be able to cash flow that facility, but not now. And I can't give you a time period when that's going to happen because we keep having these variants come back. We have these, you know, there's just, there's so many uncontrollables on my part that I don't want to tell you guys the date because I can't commit to that date. I have four intentions of doing it. I've been here since 1986. I'm not going anywhere. We're very successful. We're doing very well right now, and we're going to be here for a long time. So it's going to happen. I just don't know when. In the meantime, I'd like to see if I can continue to lease this lot on a monthly basis. That makes any sense?
Thank you. Do you want to just stay there in case there are questions? Okay, just for a couple of minutes.
Is this the same property that we talked about a few months back to purchase?
Guilty, same guy. Yep.
Okay.
So are there any questions just specifically about this interim use permit? Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, Chair Kwam. I was just curious whether for the applicant or staff, you had mentioned, let me just pull up the language real quick. Looking at the maintenance, as far as that goes, as part of the lease agreement, is that fully on Honda's responsibility? Or has?
Just, yeah, to maintain it. Yeah, the garbage, I think they have some discussion on that. Through the pandemic, there's been a lot of homeless people that have lived there. And I asked John to help me out a little while back to help clean some stuff up. I don't mind keeping care of my own property, my own litter that I put on there, but there's beds and there's, people dump stuff like, you know, furniture and stuff I really don't want to be held accountable for. I think I should have the city's help on that. I'd like to have the city's help on keeping people that shouldn't be there off of there because I'm looking after the safety of my employees. I'll keep the females parking over on my lot as winter comes in, and there's no lights over there. And I don't intend to put lights there for a leasing purpose. So I'd like to have some partnership on stuff out of my control. Anything that's under my control, my employees causing any issues whatsoever, I will handle that. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I might need you to come back up, but you can have a seat, and we're going to open our public hearing. Thank you. So open the public hearing, and the number to call in right now is 612-861-0651. 612-861-0651. Staff, did we have any calls or emails ahead of time for this issue?
We did not.
Okay. And staff, Melissa, do we have any callers holding to speak on this issue?
Chair Kwam, we do not.
Okay, so we'll leave the public hearing open just for a little bit. I'm going to assume there are no callers and make a motion to close the public hearing. There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. So now it's time for commissioner discussion or questions, either of staff or of the applicant. There's discussion. Commissioner Rudolph?
Chair Kwam, city staff, Nellie, you know, we've heard this a couple of times, and I think we've approved it the last two times. We've heard a recommendation for leasing on this. Would it make sense, I see as alternate recommendations, to approve it for a longer period of time since this, you know, has been going on for some time? And, you know, it seems to be appropriate to maybe do that at this point?
Yes, Commissioner Rudolph, you could alternatively approve it for a longer period of time, up to five years. It's the maximum for an IUP.
Questions? Why are you, why are you proposing it end, the end of 2022? I know there are a couple of extensions, but why is that considered a good amount of time?
Staff is proposing one year for the IUP and then with the option of two six-month extensions, so two years, because we feel like this, this area could be, it could be possible that someone might want to develop here. Having an IUP and a lease makes that just a little bit harder, but certainly not impossible.
Sorry, can you speak up just a bit?
Sorry. So it's possible that this site might be developed, the city owns it. So if you have an IUP and a lease for somebody using the site temporarily, it makes it just a little bit harder for a developer to come in, but not impossible. And a two-year IUP is a reasonable short temporary amount of time for interim use.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Caneley? And then Commissioner Sturza after that.
This may be a difficult question to answer, but looking forward to the 494 project, I'm curious if anybody is aware how that might impact this facility as they recover from the pandemic. It could affect the timeline of these IUPs in my imagination.
Who are you directing the question to?
That's a great question, too. I want to, I want to just get that out there because whether we're looking at this again in a year or 18 months or two years, I think we'll be dealing with that possibility. And maybe it's just a question that can't be answered.
I mean, Chair Kwam?
Commissioner Penn?
For the sake of a conversation, I guess, on this, you know, I think that's why maybe the December '22 deadline probably is a little more appropriate. You know, hopefully COVID will be going separate ways by that time, at least a little more than now. And also, I think that, you know, all the planning and construct, I don't know when they're breaking ground on 494, but, you know, I'm assuming that will be ramping up by that point in time for us to really have way more information to reconsider this. So I don't know. I think in general, I'm comfortable with the timeline, given all these different constraints and unknowns at this point.
Commissioner Sturza?
Yeah, my question was for city staff. I just wonder, they were recommending the shorter timeframe, and I wonder if extending it any longer could somehow affect the conversation about the parking ramp? And if perhaps the extending it might not be in the best interest for the parking ramp conversations? Or does city staff see them as two separate issues?
Commissioner Sturza, I believe that the, the issue of having an extension, so it's a one, it's a one-year IUP, and city staff is proposing that there be no extension allowed unless the parking ramp issue is resolved somehow. So they are separate issues, but staff is proposing that there be no extension for that IUP without resolving the parking issue. Did that answer the question?
A little. It reaffirms that I think that the proposed, the recommended timeframe, I'm comfortable with that. And we certainly can revisit this issue again if we need to. I don't think that there's, that it's too prohibitive to have to come back to this issue again if we need to extend again.
So that made, if I heard that correctly, that is a significant difference in if we approve it for one year or two years because that will be the time that the parking ramp has to be resolved? So it's not just a matter of laying it over again. It's going to be important to the car dealership because they have to have an important thing resolved by the end of this IUP?
Yes, so this IUP is, the approval is for one year, so they would need to resolve something. The options were to ask for an extension, an extension for their land use approvals, or an amendment to the land use approvals, or the third one, to apply for permits to construct it. So they'd need to do one of those three things in order to get the second year of the IUP. Otherwise, it's just a one-year approval.
I was wondering if Mr. Carter wanted to comment on the one year or if you feel that's important?
Madam Chair and commissioners, city staff, I don't think it's really that important because things are going to change. You know, a year from now, I hope things are weeded out. So I just want to clarify, though, if I can, on, you're going to give me the next year to talk to John and Melissa about extending this and the process to come back? Or do I need to have that done before this is approved?
You would need to come back and discuss the land use approvals for the parking structure within the next year. So within...
Okay, so I have a year to kind of put that together with your guys' help?
Yes, one year from approval of the resolution for the IUP.
That sounds fair.
Thank you for coming back to the mic. And then my other question was for staff. I saw the, the conditions, two of the conditions are that the parking lot has to be kept in good state of repair and that trees, shrubs, and grasses shall be trimmed and maintained by the dealership, right? So what about furniture? He was saying, Mr. Carter was saying he doesn't think they should be responsible for... He was saying, Mr. Carter was saying he doesn't think they should be responsible for furniture or homeless people, but that should be clarified, I would think, right? I mean, does that include furniture?
Chair Kwam, the current proposal would include any trash and debris would be responsible of the tenant of Honda, as written.
Okay, thanks. Other questions or comments, discussion? Okay, well, it seems we're ready for a motion. If anyone would be willing to make a motion?
A motion to recommend adoption of this resolution authorizing an interim use permit to allow a standalone parking facility at 7,700 Pillsbury Avenue South.
No second. Discussion? I did drive by, and it seemed like a perfect place to have parking, so I hope it works out. It's, there's trees and shrubs, and there's, you know, other industrial-type feel over there. So it seems like a really good use of that space, at least for now. Any other discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Is there anything else for the applicant to do before he leaves?
No, thank you.
Yeah, good night, thank you for coming.
Oh, sorry, the, the council will need to approve this as well. So the next council meeting is, I'm blanking on the date, but you can come back for the council meeting. And I'll send that to you.
Thanks, Nellie. All right, so next we have liaison reports. Go through the list. First is community services advisory.
No meeting.
Pardon me?
There was no meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next, city council.
No report.
Thank you. Housing and redevelopment authority.
At the last HRA meeting, they approved a resolution to support the expansion of the Minnesota Independence College and Community. I think we had a work session on that. So they did approve a resolution of support on that. They did approve a contract for private development with benefactor brewing. And perhaps city staff could answer specific questions about that, but it's in regards to the Lakewins, that Lakewin, the property over by Lakewins. The contract for private development is paving the way for that. And then they also approved a resolution to approve a loan for Link 65, for $500,000 to help them with their financing for the development on 65th Street and Lindell Avenue South. And they approved their budget.
Thank you. That's a lot of stuff really relevant to the planning commission. So it's good to hear follow-up and previews of what's coming down the pike. So next, we have transportation commission.
No current report available.
Thank you. Sustainability commission?
There is no meeting in July.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to city planners' reports. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Kwam. The, I just have a handful of items. The North Bay Company has held a neighborhood open house related to the proposal at 10166 Street, formerly known as the ME Project. That was held last Tuesday, the 17th, and the developer shared the latest concept plans with the neighborhood. And those participants engaged a significant amount of dialogue with that developer, had their questions answered. So that was a, a good event. As Commissioner Sturza mentioned, benefactor brewing received financial assistance to assist in the purchase of that development site. So that replaces a mortgage that they had with the county, with local funds here, and we expect them to move forward with their land use approvals in the coming month. Well, then a couple upcoming work sessions to put on your radar. Staff, looking at the 20, excuse me, October 26th for a work sketching, work session to continue the discussion related to the missing middle housing work and comprehensive plan implementation. To date, we have build on the direction that we got from the March session on the same topic and put together some changes to the zoning code to, again, align with the comprehensive plan that we would like to share with the policymakers. And also, we did a little more digging on some of the missing middle housing types, specifically the duplexes, and how we can integrate that as recommended by the comprehensive plan into our low-density residential areas. And so we'll be discussing how we intend to move forward with some of that work. And then finally, we're planning a work session on electric vehicle and bicycle parking and changes to the code in, in relation to those issues. So that's the items that I had for the planner's report.
Thank you. Do you have a date on the second?
Don't have a confirmed date.
Okay.
So we will obviously let you know when we get that firmly scheduled.
And with the neighborhood meeting, do we get to see the summary of that or comments when we, when it comes before us as a public hearing? Or?
In our staff reports, we like to summarize the, that, that event when that occurs for land use items or the, in the staff report for the land use approvals.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
When is the next planning commission meeting?
Oh, thank you. Next regular planning commission meeting is September 27th at 7:00 PM here in the city council chambers.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? And we have, we have a motion in a second, so all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.